Welcome to Community Watch. Greg.
So.
So, we're interviewing candidates today for Rome City Commission, Ward 1 and 3. And the election is November 3rd. And then, these wards, you can vote for up to 3 candidates. Or just 2, or just 1, if there's just 1 that you feel strongly about. And we will have our candidates in a minute. Some of these interviews, you are doing solo, because we had some scheduling issues. But, we'll be right back after this with our candidates, so stay with us.
Have a kit, so you're ready for any emergency. Develop a plan for what you and your family will do before disaster strikes, and stay informed during severe weather, any way you can.
Welcome back to Community Watch. We've been joined by Rome City Commission candidate, Abid Bawa, from Ward 3. Welcome to the show.
Thank you.
And we're just gonna begin with our questions.
Sure.
What is your primary motivation for running for City Commission in this election?
My motivation really is to serve the people of Rome. I've been in Rome for 12 years. And I've lived here for the past 12 years, and I love this city. And Rome is home. I'm raising a 7-year-old son. My ex-wife and I are co-parenting, so I really, you know, want him to have a wonderful, just great future here in Rome. You know, he's my only son, so I don't want him to leave. It seems, that seems to be a trend nowadays. You graduate high school, you go to college, but you don't come back.
Do you see any benefits to term limits for City Commissioners in order to ensure new approaches to problems and new ideas?
Most definitely. I'm for term limits on all levels, federal, local, state, you name it. Term levels ensures a refresher. It doesn't, it minimizes complacency. There's no such thing as, it eliminates a whole career politician. You know, with, without term limits, you just see people just working to get re-elected. Whereas, term limits will ensure that they do their job.
The protection of our neighborhoods against commercial encroachment is an ongoing struggle. Is there any way that the city can protect our neighborhoods, so that citizens do not have to fight this battle again and again?
As far as, from annexation?
Commercial encroachment, businesses or companies moving into neighborhood space?
Well, I mean, if the City Commission actually did what they're supposed to do, which is represent the people, and the will of the people. If they listen to the people, that's what needs to be done. It appears that they have their own set of rules, and whom they are, seem to be working for, is not really the interest of the people. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running.
Okay. Explain why it is necessary to sell the area that is now being referred to as the city's Central Park. It would seem that the majority of citizens are against a proposed sale and development. Recently, a social media page received over 800 members in 2 days who were opposed to this development. Explain your position.
I have, I didn't really know much about it until the page came up. I saw where it had 800 likes in the first 3 days. Matter of fact, today, it was at 1,100. After hearing, I was at the City Commission meeting 2 weeks ago, and seeing how passionate the citizens were against the development, I looked further into it. And my position stands with the citizens. Looking at, we have, and it's also with good reason. We have ample land for commercial development available, just waiting to be built upon, with all those yellow signs out there, you know, for rent, for lease, for sale. But, I don't see why we need to even touch Central Park. It is already in a centrally-located area, with a lot of congestion around it, between Riverside, on Riverside, between Turnicall and the bypass. Building on that, not only impedes on environmental issues, but then you've got an added, an added amount of congestion to that. It just doesn't really make sense.
The city is taking possession of the GE property, with intentions of turning it into a park. Would the use of this property be better as a commercial development? How would you justify turning an industrial property into a park, and at the same time, turning what is being called the city's Central Park into a commercial property?
Absolutely. I think a commercial project would do well. That's, that site is an eyesore. You know, it's, I drive by it every day, and I simply, you know, it just would make much better sense to have a commercial development on that area, as opposed to something that's already inhabited by nature.
Alright, Mr. Bawa. According to the US Census, I'm sorry, we have a series of questions inspired by a recent US census. African-American and Hispanic residents of Rome total over 40% of the population. Do the city's boards and committees reflect these numbers? How can the city do a better job at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
The best way for more minorities to run, to be placed, is, you know, if it was, if it was an elected issue, there should be more running, better chance for them to be elected. Maybe, I would probably reach out more to, you know, to, I guess, widen the pool. Encourage applicant, applicants to, you know, to encourage the top. Now, as far as when it goes, when it says minority, not just any minority, I like to go after the best ones available.
According to the census, the population in Rome has decreased by almost a percentage point over the past 5 years. If population growth in Rome is too much to expect, what suggestions would you have to simply maintain the population that we have?
I would boil down to is jobs. If you have adequate employment in this town, and I mean, I don't mean just underemployment, you know, just, just an employee, a job just to, just to make the numbers look good. I'm talking about jobs, full employment, you know, where you have a well-paying job, where you can at least support your family, at least half-support your family, and, you know, with another parent, with another partner. Every time, it just seems like we've had so many jobs, which had full employment, you know, where they had benefits. And they just disappeared. But now, they're being replaced with minimum-wage restaurant jobs, fast-food jobs. So, if we can bring back those type of, the type of jobs that were here before, when I first came to Rome, you know, Galian Lord, Florida Tile, I think Church Chair Industries, those type of jobs, which, which can actually help support a family. Which was it? Mohawk, the Mohawk plant that shut down, things like that. If they can at least replace those jobs with comparable type of employment, that can definitely bring people back to Rome, and at least maintain the population that we've had.
Alright. 30% of the children in Rome and Florida County live below the poverty line. Is that an issue that the current commission is addressing in any way? Should the City Commission be working on solutions or services for those who live in poverty?
Absolutely. Again, it boils down to the type of employment we have in Rome. The City Commission needs to be more active in luring more, more investment, more industry into Rome. And again, quality industry. Now, I know that, you know, with manufacturing, there's always gonna be a turn where jobs will disappear. But, you have other cities in the, in Georgia, and Tennessee, which are bringing in more industry, with well-paying jobs. Rome needs to, needs to get on board and make, make offers, make, make itself more attractive. And that can be done with the City Commission, mainly jointly with the County Commission, to make Rome look more attractive. We have Atlanta, Chattanooga, Birmingham, and potentially Nashville. You know, we're like in a, in a very centrally-located area, with all these other major cities. Atlanta being saturated, Birmingham, you know, being a traffic mess, we can, we can at least take advantage of the overflow, the spillover from companies who want to invest a little bit out there, but still be within proximity.
If elected, would you be willing to have Town Hall meetings with citizens in the area you represent, in order to discuss upcoming controversial issues? And are there other ways that you plan to communicate with your constituents?
Yes. I'm very transparent, and one of the things that I want to keep is open dialogue with all my constituents. Through my Facebook page, I would gladly make, like, after every, I would encourage participation, but at the same time, I would always report to my bosses, which would be the citizens. Through my Facebook page, through social media, that's, seems to be the, you know, that's, that's the way I communicate with everybody. Just let, let them all know what's going on, and, you know, let them, let them in on what's, you know, what's cooking in City Hall. Apparently, that is not happening as it should today. And that's another thing what encouraged me, is we need more transparency.
Alright. Do you believe that the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings and areas on the National Register? Please explain.
As far as, I really don't see where they, you know, where, where that has come up yet. I mean, I really don't know, to the full extent, to really make a judgment or make a comment on that, on that area.
Alright. There is discussion about creating an arts district in Rome. Do you think this would be a good time for the city to support an arts headquarters in Rome? Perhaps, to house the Rome Area Council for the Arts? Especially when many other towns have a similar building, for example, Cartersville and Calhoun?
You know, it would, it's an issue that I would definitely look at, and hear what the citizens have to say about that. Would have to look at finances, if we have the money to do it. If we're, you know, if we have budget constraints, I think that a project like that can, can be on hold. One of the things that, that there might, they might look into is, you know, if they, if it means raising taxes to do something like that, I would say no. Yeah, just that's, I'm an opponent, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of any, of any tax increase to do any type of project, which, you know, which wouldn't have a great immediate benefit.
Okay. Do you, during your tenure, the current SPOLOST would end. What project would you submit for a new SPOLOST?
You know, I would have to see at the end of the SPOLOST, what's needed. I would not, I would, no, the SPOLOST is, I have like a love-hate relationship with a SPOLOST. The SPOLOST has done wonders, but at the same time, they put these little pet projects in there to, in order to get them passed. The only way I would really recommend a SPOLOST is if there was a, on a counter, a counter benefit with, with respect to property taxes. If there's a reduction in property taxes at the end of the SPOLOST, I would definitely look into that. But, I would have to see what's, what's, what's most beneficial. It just, it appears, you know, that, that there's been too many little pet projects that are get, that get kind of railroaded in there, in order to, to make the SPOLOST look more attractive, and to get more people on board.
There is discussion regarding relocating the city's recycling center. Why is that necessary, and where would you like to see it relocate?
I would have to look further into that. I personally have no, no knowledge of the city recycling center wanting to be relocated. But, we have ample land for, for, for that, so would like to further see into that.
Okay. I don't think we have time for that.
Oh, okay, we're running out. Well, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
And we will be right back after this. Stay with us.
Welcome to Understood.org, a free online resource for parents of kids with learning and attention issues, with personalized recommendations, tools, and expert advice.
Welcome back to Community Watch, and we've been joined by Bill Collins, candidate for City Commissioner in Ward 3. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me.
And we'll just get right into the questions.
Great.
What is your primary motivation for running for City Commission in this election?
Well, like it has been in all the elections I ran, and I always thought if I could do something positive for my community, that's where I wanted to be at. It has allowed me, this commission, to be right in the mix of it, and opportunity to serve this community, and work with people, and try to make positive changes and things happen.
Commissioner Collins, do you see any benefits to term limits for City Commissioners in order to ensure new approaches to problems and new ideas?
I think it could be some positives to that, and it could possibly sometime be some negatives to it. I think experience and relationships, and especially with the government, we have a strong city manager style government, and the opportunities through GMA and areas like that allows to interact with our elected state candidates, and things of that nature, for bringing about funds to this here community, and building those relationships, and have them ongoing, and things of that, that nature. And the training that's allowed it to you, through being a commissioner, to bring in those fresh ideas to Rome and Florida County, it's important. And then, implement them. And the funds through the Department of Community Affairs, et cetera. Relationships that you build with state legislators, the governor's office, and GMA, and people across this estate, and then collaborating and bringing those people to your city, seeing your problems, et cetera, that's all good. And sometime, when term limits interrupt that, you know, those relationships fall off. But, again, I could see positives on both sides.
The protection of our neighborhoods against commercial encroachment is an ongoing struggle. Is there any way that the city can protect our neighborhoods, so that the citizens do not have to fight this battle again and again?
I think that the city has done a fantastic job for us, putting things in place, zonings, and buffers, and things of that nature, for us making sure that commercial slash community mixes properly zone, as well as properly enforce. We have a great planning commissioners made up by the citizens of Rome. They're selected by their peers, and people that have, have a great interest in what goes on in Rome, that put their name in the hat, to be chosen to serve on these committees. And then, before it even get to us, as a voting party, to make these things, implement them, those guys send their, not only expert opinions from the directors, which we have in place, as planning directors, et cetera, but that body that's made up, they'll weigh in on it, giving yea and nay, whether or not this is something that fits to our ordinance. And a lot of time, that weigh heavily, it's their opinion as to how we vote on certain situations, to make sure that our neighborhoods are protected. And as far as your question, I think that is very important. I try, myself, as a commissioner, to try to make sure, and look at if those, my own community, and whether or not I myself, in fact, would have such, interrupt my everyday life.
Explain why it is necessary to sell the area that is now being referred to as the city's Central Park. It would seem that the majority of citizens are against the proposed, the proposed sale and development. Recently, a social media page received over 800 members in 2 days who were opposed to this development. Explain your position.
Well, it's a piece of property that's, of course, been a city dump at one time. It's had baseball fields on it years ago. It's been undeveloped for quite a number of years. And I think that the residents is weighing in on, on the, the fact that they thought that it might not need to be developed. And the ones that thought that it should be developed, I think all of those opinions should be heard. Our job has been, and it's ongoing, is to make sure that the wetlands and things of that nature that come along over there with that area is protected in, to its best of its ability. I think that the developers that has proposed, which nothing is right now is in concrete, that it'll be sold or not to be sold. It had been a lot of steps put forward to make certain that it possibly would even fit their proposals. What I would say about the developers is the fact that these guys have a great history of doing smart developments, smart growth, creating jobs in our community. You can probably go to 2 or 3 parts of City of Rome, and not only have they created jobs and created smart growth and development, but they keep them up. They are beautiful areas. I don't see this here piece of land being done any different if this proposal go down, and this here happen. I do know from my conversations with the parties, that this wish that this possibly could be at another place, or could even be negotiated to work with as far as the wetlands is concerned, have did great work to make absolutely certain that they work with these developers, to make sure that there's such things as walk trails, and bike trails, and even a great number of the, part of the wetlands is protected. And so, I look for that situation to continue to go on. We, as a body of commissioners, got the recommendation from that same group that I talked about earlier, as unanimous vote, to yes, this will fit, and this will work. And they heard the same crowd, of course, that we're hearing from, from the body. And it's our job, as, as the voting part of this here situation, to make sure that when we ever do get a actual site planned, and a possibly, these developers to purchase this land, and when they come in for the buffers, the zones, et cetera, that we do our job to make sure that those areas are protected, to the best of our ability.
The city is taking possession of the GE property, with intentions of turning it into a park. Would the use of this property be better as a commercial development? And how do you justify turning an industrial property into a park, and at the same time, turning what is being called the city's Central Park into a commercial property?
The property at GE has been something that the city has been waiting on for quite some time, to come online for development. And it's a great gift from GE, and we certainly appreciate that. It does however, come with some restrictions. We all know that that land out there has a long history of PCBs, et cetera, in the soils. And so, the use of that property is, is gonna be somewhat limited. And that's where the idea of possible recreation has come into play, as to the best use for that property out there.
Commissioner, we have a series of questions inspired by recent US census. African-American and Hispanic residents of Rome total over 40% of the population. Do the city's boards and committees reflect these numbers? How can the city do a better job at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
Well, I can tell you from this city, there's been a cry out of minds to do everything I possibly can to get more minorities involved with city government entities, such as the different boards, having everything to do from recreation, to alcohol control, to the planning commission, et cetera. I myself have made several nominees to such boards as the Housing Authority. We recently put 2 Afro-Americans on the newly-formed Parks and Recreation Board. We have what we call, and I'm here, sitting here before you, as one of the pioneers of, and when I come along, that, it did not exist a application for new blood to be put on these here boards. We had the ordinance in place, and the rules and regulations, but there was not being a heed to. That's one of the first actions, when I come on the commission, that I began to help the manager realize that we need to enforce and do. And so, it has allowed for the opportunity for us to have an application. And you'll see me quite regularly on the commission, allude to that, and tell the listening audience, "Look, if you have an opinion, or would you like to be, serve on one of these boards, please come down, fill out the application." You don't have to come down, fill it out online, send it in. Every time we have an opening on any of the committee, they are reviewed. And we strongly suggest, even here today, if you have an interest in participating in city government, and any of those boards are formed, we strongly urge you to take advantage of this here opportunity. We would love to hear from you.
According to the census, the population in Rome has decreased by almost a percentage point over the past 5 years. If population growth in Rome is too much to expect, what suggestions would you have to simply maintain the population that we have?
Well, that's a great question. And a lot of times, I spend time on some of the subcommittees, and we talk about community development. And it's a great opportunity that we have in this town, and I feel like that we're not taking advantage of. And that's the fact that we have these young folks going to school in our city, at all the different colleges what we have here. I'm thinking in my mind, that we need to do everything we can to begin to collaborate with them, and find out what it is that pique their interest, to keep them from driving that 70 miles down the road to Atlanta, Birmingham, or some of the other cities. We're doing lots of great things through the chamber, and to figure out what type jobs, et cetera, that, that would probably hold our young population here. We think that we're working on some things, like the Northwood Church Region Hospital, and the proposed plan by TSW, that's just now about to be adopted, in the hope for going forward, we'll get a chance to implement. That'll give us an opportunity to retain some of these young people as well, and lots more citizens to look at Rome, to be their home. We have a great record for our public safety, and we have a great community in Rome, which I love so much. And all our citizens, I think, love and, and know that we've been the number 1 city, small city in the southeast, and things of this here nature, the great rivers. I think we have a great, great community here, and the more we get to word that, I think those numbers are gonna change.
Commissioner, 30% of the children in Rome and Florida County live below the poverty line. Is that an issue that the current commission is addressing in any way? Should the City Commission be working on solutions or services for those who live in poverty?
Well, I can tell you, the answer to that is yes. Some years back, of course- Some years back, of course, you know, we opened our doors when Katrina came through. And it hasn't stopped since then. Rome, they have a nickname called We Care. There's actually another program, We Care. And we have other communities that surround us. A lot of times even with the homeless people, they'll drop them off at our doorstep so you can get food, clothing and anything else there. It's such, I guess, housing that like the Northwest Regional Housing, Ms. Sandra Hudson them do that makes sure that these people are, you know, of course, homes allowed it to them if they fit certain criteria. And then even if they don't, we got other programs that we work with them to make absolutely certain they get shelter afford them being hungry. I don't think it's an opportunity for them to go hungry in this here city because the faith-based organizations have made sure through the, not only the churches, but the community kitchen that we get fed here in the city of Rome.
Well, that's the end of our time, but thank you for being with us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
And we'll be back right after this.
Millions of loving cats and dogs and shelters and rescues need our help to find a home. So go to theshelterpetproject.org, search your local shelters and rescues and adopt already.
Welcome back to Community Watch. We've been joined by Rome City Commission candidate Craig McDaniel in Ward Three. Welcome to the show. We'll go ahead and start with our questions. What is your primary motivation for running for city commission in this election?
Well, I'm a lifelong Roman. I was born and raised in West Rome and have lived all of my life in Rome with the exception of the time when I was off at college. And I have been involved in a lot of community activities. I was president of Cusa Valley Tech and Georgia Northwestern Technical College. Served as president of Rome Rotary. Have been involved with United Way. I chaired a United Way campaign. I have been involved with SPOST. I chaired one of the SPOST campaigns for the Floyd County Schools that funded the Model School. I was on the baseball committee that bought the Rome Braves here. chaired the Rome Floyd Development Authority, chaired the board for the Greater Rome Chamber of Commerce. I love Rome. I think it's the best community in the state of Georgia, hands down. I retired and I thought I could sit at home and not do anything and I realized after about three weeks I couldn't do that. And so I've gotten involved. I got my real estate license. I'm selling real estate now for tolls, templing, right? And when this opportunity came about, when I found Kim Canada was not running, I had some people call and say, would you do this? I always said I would never run for public office. I had said a number of times. But the timing seemed good and I have the time to commit to it. And I care about the community. I do. I think this, I've traveled and I've been in thirty-six states and eight foreign countries and I've never been to a place I would swap with Rome. And I just want to continue serving.
All right. Do you see any benefit to term limits for city commissioners in order to ensure new approaches to problems and new ideas?
Absolutely. I would favor term limits. I think we needed in Congress. I think for city and county commissioners, I think three terms at the most. I think after you serve two terms, when you go into your third term, it gives notice to people out in the community that we need to get some new blood in. That's one of my big heartburns with government at the local and state level is you get people in positions and over a period of time, I think they get to the point where they think that's their position. And I think term limits would get some new blood in. We've got to get more people involved in the political process. Politics at the local level is the only polit, you know, that's the only thing that works. It doesn't work in Washington. And at the local level, we need to get more people registered to vote. And we need to get more people running for office. This, this office here, this election, there ought to be ten or twelve people running.
Okay. The protection of our neighborhoods against commercial encroachment is an ongoing struggle. Is there any way that the city can protect our neighborhoods so the citizens do not have to fight this battle again and again?
If you're talking in terms of actual physical protection against crime?
Commercial encroachment?
Commercial encroachment. Well, I, I think we have zoning in place. I've actually served on the Rome Floyd Planning Commission for a while and I know that that process works. I think to the other end of that, I've had people complain that it's very hard to do business in Rome. They've had problems getting permits or getting licenses, licenses or getting, you know, proper code approval. So I think there's a happy medium in there somewhere. The process that we have in place works, but it's like anything when it comes to government or any regulation or you guys work in education. Not everybody will always be happy, but I think the process for the most part works.
Explain why it is necessary to sell the area that is now being referred to as the city's Central Park. It would seem that the majority of citizens are against the proposed sale and development. Recently, a social media page received over eight hundred members in two days who are opposed to this development. Explain your position.
I think that's probably the most sensitive question in this election and I honestly didn't know. Two weeks ago, I attended the city commission meeting where the city commissioners voted to approve the zoning for the two parcels of land. Now, I live in the city. I'm a lifelong Roman. I didn't know that the issue existed. What I have learned is that in two thousand and six, the city did a request for proposals for development for the land there. And the lead butter group is the only group that responded. And they have gotten extensions. I think the current extension lasts until December of twenty sixteen. And I know the last vote was five in favor and two against. I don't know how the other two commissioners would have voted. It was approved by the planning commission. Both of the parcels were approved by six to nothing vote. I think that, again, that process is working out the way that it should work out. I don't think any sitting commissioner or anybody running for commission for the commissioner's seat can tell you how they're going to vote until they see the proposal. I think once the proposal comes forward from the lead butters and from the Williams Group, then the decision can be made. Is this something that we want to move forward on? Now, I'm, I'm a big CRBI fan. I'm, I'm a fan of Joe Cook. We had the same discussion when the forum was built. There were people that were, that thought building, that building as close to the riverbank would impact the floodwater. I don't know if it has or not. But it's a good discussion to have and now we have a face, Joe Cook and CRBI are the face of the of the environmental group. I know there's been good dialogue back and forth between Joe and that group and the lead butters and Sammy Rich and the people of the city. It's one of those things that regardless of how it comes out, people are not going to be pleased. I know. I can't tell you today how I'm going to vote because I don't know what it's going to look like when it comes out. But I would not be in favor of extending the deadline again. I know it's been extended four times. I think until December of twenty sixteen. If the lead butters can't come up with a plan to present to the city commission by then, I don't think another deadline should be extended. But I think a win-win situation would be if there could be some development there and then the trail system be further developed. Burwell Creek not impacted in a negative way. And the study that was done, I think back in two thousand, the Jaeger study that first used the term Central Park, the city has not acted on much of that at all. And it was more about the development of Jackson Hill and Blossom Hill. I think if those two, if, if that plan could be revisited, some money could be invested in developing that plan. And then, and then you could have a trail system through Burwell Creek, through the wetlands, onto the river. I think that would be a win-win situation.
Okay. All right. The city is taking possession of the GE property with intentions of turning it into a park. Would the use of this property be better as a commercial development? How would you justify turning an industrial property into a park and at the same time, turning what is being called the city's Central Park into a commercial property?
Well, I think the GE discussion has gone on ever since GE first announced they were closing. I actually, when I was chairman of the board of the chamber, we went to Washington DC and met with the officials from GE and had a conversation about the property and what they would do. My plan, my hope was that at some point in time, manufacturing jobs could be brought back there. And lately, they have brought some jobs back, but it's more warehousing. It's not manufacturing. I think the highest and best use of that property is to take the land and, and it's a pretty good sized parcel of land. It wraps all the way back around to Redmond Road across from the convenience store there. I think the highest and best use would be to do, to look at commercial development, but also to have a consideration for manufacturing if we could bring some jobs in. Every decision that I look at in terms of how we use space or how we use dollars that are taxpayer dollars, will always go back to the question, can we create jobs? I think that's our biggest challenge in, in this community right now. Quality of life. We have a great quality of life here because people have invested, but so much of that investment came from the wealth that was created from, you know, back during the Galian Lord days and the Lindell days and the Templin one days. And as we continue to lose manufacturing jobs, if we don't bring those jobs back in twenty, thirty years from now, that quality of life that we enjoy today will not be there.
All right. We have a series of questions inspired by a recent U.S. census. African American and Hispanic residents of Rome total over forty percent of the population. Do the city's boards and committees reflect these numbers? How can the city do a better job at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
I think it just takes a concerted effort. I think you work through one hundred black men. I think you try to include young people in high school leadership Rome. I think the, the camp that's done at Georgia Highlands during the summer. I, I think it's just a, and it's something that you can't assume that somebody else is doing. Somebody has to take the initiative to do it. But I, I think it's got to be a very concerted effort. And I think there's a role there for the city government and the county government to play. I think because of that, of the large percentage of minorities that we have, you've got to understand that whether or not they're at the table, they're impacted by every decision that's made. And when we're using tax dollars, you've got to assume they're paying forty percent of the taxes, either through their purchases or through their property taxes. So I think we just have to make the effort to be more inclusive.
All right. According to the U.S. census, the population in Rome has decreased by almost a percentage point over the past five years. If population growth in Rome is too much to expect, what suggestions would you have to simply maintain the population that we have?
Well, again, I think you've got to have jobs. I don't think people understand the impact of losing a Galian Lord and a Lindell Mills and universal tax. When we lost universal tax, there are a lot of people who had to leave Rome to find jobs. The impact of losing Northwest Georgia Regional Hospital. That was eight hundred jobs and a lot of those people had to leave Rome to find jobs. The day of thinking that if you graduate from high school, there's a job waiting for you, or if you go to Georgia Northwestern or Georgia Highlands, there's a job there waiting for you, that's not the case now. And I think we've got to go back and look at how good of a job are we doing in economic development? I think we do a good job growing jobs from the existing industries we have. But we've got to bring more jobs into the community. And, you know, we didn't, the recession of two thousand and eight, because we have a diverse economic base, we were not hurt in the same manner that Dalton and Whitfield County was hurt or were hurt. But we are in a situation today that we can't, we don't have a plan for a three percent growth or a five percent growth or a seven percent growth. I think if we can ever get access to the interstate, if we can ever get a good shipping lane to the interstate, then I think jobs will come in and I think our population will go up at that point in time. I don't think we're any closer to that today than we were twenty years ago.
All right. Well, we're about out of our time, but thank you so very much for being with us.
I appreciate the opportunity and I wish I had time for another fifteen or twenty minutes. I appreciate the questions and again, I just want to serve Rome and the citizens here and make it a better place to live. I have kids and grandkids now.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for being with us. We'll see you back right after this.
Welcome back to Community Watch and we're now being joined by Evie McNeese and she is running for reelection in Ward Three. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here and we're going to get right into the questions.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate the invitation.
What is your primary motivation for running for city commissioner in this election?
Well, I've served now for eight years. And the first couple of years you serve, you, you try to get used to it and really get involved. And then I was honored to serve as mayor for three years of that. And I've, I've have a lot of things that I've worked on in the past, a lot of things that still I want to continue to work on. I'm also working a lot with our Georgia Municipal Association. So working at the state level, doing committees such as Legislative Policy Committee, serving on the executive and the board of directors for GMA. So not only am I serving locally and, and absolutely love doing what I do, but I'm also able to work at the state level with GMA and bring a lot of those ideas and those issues home. We can talk about it. Then we go up and we work at the Capitol and we have lobbyists and so not only am I working at a local level, I'm also working at that level to better our city.
Okay. Do you see any benefit to term limits for city commissioners in order to ensure new approaches to problems and new ideas?
On one hand, I do. I, I see that, you know, sometimes we need to have new blood, new fresh ideas. But also when you have experienced commissioners, you have a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of, as I said, experience. So it, it can go both ways. It really can. It's always good to have new people. But I certainly think that experience really says a lot in itself to be able to serve our citizens.
The protection of our neighborhoods against commercial encroachment is an ongoing struggle. Is there any way that the city can protect our neighborhoods so the citizens do not have to fight this battle again and again?
Well, and, and we have as a, as a commission vowed to stop encroachment on our neighborhoods. And that's very evident in the votes that have been taken recently. The most recent, of course, is the turn of a call issue with the Cooper Drive and beyond residents. Everyone has a right to be able to petition and, and come before the planning commission and, you know, present their case and say, you know, this is where I'd like to have my business. This is the plan that I have in place. So I don't see that we would say no to everyone without their day in, in court. It's not in court, obviously. It's in the planning commission. But as commissioners, we know the importance of the integrity of our neighborhoods. And so we certainly do protect them. And so we certainly do protect them. We, you know, look at both sides of the issue. Economic development is important, but is it, is it important to the detriment of neighborhoods? We say no.
Explain why it is necessary to sell the area that is now being referred to as the city's Central Park. It would seem that the majority of citizens are against the proposed sale and development. Recently, a social media page received over 800 members in two days who are opposed to this development. Explain your position.
Well, the property has not been sold. This has been ongoing since, I believe, 2007 and that was before I was on the commission. So I'm going by the date that I was given. It's a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, that has been, you know, coming forward. So the land has not been sold. Nothing has been absolutely done with that property. Nothing has been set in stone. What's happening over these years, of course, the economic downturn caused the developer to, you know, not be able to go forward with his plans immediately. So it is coming back into light of the city. But all we're doing at this point is going through all the steps that are necessary to be able to make a decision as to whether this project will go forward or not. So there are a lot of people who are against it. There also are a lot of people who are for it. You don't always hear both sides of the issue. We do, because we get the emails and the texts and the calls. But at this point, nothing has been set in stone, nothing has been set. And the commission, the city, Rome City Commission, has the final say-so once everything gets into place. Now, I also serve on the redevelopment committee and in that committee, we talk about what one group wants and what the citizens want and what the developers want. And I charged both the developer and the executive director at the time to work together. We know that working together is what our city is all about. And rather than bicker back and forth, I want them to say, well, we want this and we'd like to see this. Can this be done? Is this possible? And working together, there have been some concessions. So at this point, nothing is, is done. I still charge them with the responsibility of working through this. And the city commission has not made a decision. That will come way on down the road when everything has been settled and everything has been talked about. And it may be years and years down, down the road. So I don't want people up in arms. I want people to be aware. I want people to express their opinions to us. I love to hear both sides of it, but I for one, do not make a decision until everything is ready for a vote.
Okay. The city is taking possession of the GE property with intentions of turning it into a park. Would the use of this property be better as a commercial development? How do you justify turning an industrial property into a park and at the same time turning what is being called the city's Central Park into a commercial property?
Well, we just received 123 acres from GE Monday. And that's also been an ongoing project. At this point, we have some, had some plans done way back when. Nothing is really settled for what it will be at this time. We're looking at all our options on that property right now. We just took possession of it less than 48 hours ago.
We have a series of questions inspired by a recent US census. African American and Hispanic residents of Rome total over 40% of the population. Do the city boards and committees reflect these numbers? How can the city do a better job at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
I, I'm gonna tell you something. I think the city of Rome is doing the very, absolute very best that they can do. We are identifying minorities. We are identifying people who would be excellent on boards. We're all charged with the responsibility to go out and to find people who will serve. A lot of times, especially the Hispanic community, they're, they're a little shy. They're, they're a little, you know, they don't feel as comfortable. And it's our job to, to make them feel comfortable, to make them feel that they're a part of the city of Rome, to make them aware of the committees that they can serve on, where they would best fit. So I really feel like the city commissioners know that, you know, what we need. The city staff and management of the city have been doing an excellent job. Now, you know, we can't just pull people off the street and make them do these committees. But, you know, with understanding and with education and with our prompting, we certainly hope that, you know, we will get more and more minorities. And we have, we absolutely have. Is it, you know, up to 40%? I can't tell you that for sure. Will it be over 40% at one point? We don't know, but we, we are trying everything we can to include everyone. We're all Romans.
Okay. According to the US census, the population in Rome has decreased by almost a percentage point over the past five years. If population growth in Rome is too much to expect, what suggestions would you have to simply maintain the population that we have?
Well, there, it's obviously jobs. We have to have good paying jobs for the people who are here. If you don't have a good paying job to support your family, you're not gonna stay. You can't stay. So jobs obviously is our number one issue. We need to bring in jobs and not just any jobs. We need jobs that, as I said, good paying jobs with benefits and with retirement. That's the, that's one of the ways that we keep people and we can recruit people in if we have the economic development, you know, to come here and to be able to supply those jobs. We also need to have a good quality of life if we want to attract young people. We know that we need things like trails. We know that we need entertainment. We, we know those kind of things. Rome has also been named as a retirement community. So, you know, we can also bring in some of the older people and, you know, we, look at what we have. We have three colleges. We have a university. These are things that attract and retain citizens. And I think Rome has some work to do, but I think we've done an excellent job, you know, keeping the people that we have and the young people to come back. That's so, so important to get our young people that we educate here to come back.
Okay. 30% of the children in Rome and Florida County live below the poverty line. Is there, is that an issue that the current commission is addressing in any way? Should the city commission be working on solutions or services for those living in poverty?
Yes, and, and we are. Look at our new Anna K. Davies School. We have the pre-K program. It is so absolutely wonderful. This is gonna get some of those children in there at the age of three years old and get them started on education. As you and I both know, education is the key to success in life. It doesn't mean that you're gonna make tons of money. It doesn't mean that you're gonna have everything that you desire, but education is the way to get ahead. And if we can start our children at three years old, wanting that education, really yearning for that education. And so that's one way. I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. My goodness. The, the programs that are available for those children there are tremendous. I, I'm so, so proud to be a part of that. Of the children, and I should say the young people that attend there, we had, we have had a 100% graduation rate. So yes, certainly we're doing what we can and I, I hope it continues because that's our future.
If elected, would you be willing to have town hall meetings with citizens in the area you represent in order to discuss upcoming controversial issues? Are there other ways that you plan to communicate with your constituents?
Well, yes. And, and Bill Collins and I are both in the same ward. And Bill and I have had some town hall, hall meetings together and we certainly can do more of that, you know? And between the two of us, I see, you know, no reason. And whoever the others are, if they are elected, then, you know, they of course would, would wanna be involved too. So yeah, it's just a way of letting our citizens know, you know, what's happening either in our ward or within the bounds of the city. And also, you know, social media, Facebook, Twitter, those are good ways to let people know, you know, what's happening.
Okay. Do you believe the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings in areas on the national register? Please explain.
I think we're trying. I think we're certainly trying. Our Historic Preservation Board really does a lot of research, does a lot of soul searching to, to make sure that we retain the buildings that we have. I, I think a lot, a lot has been talked about, you know, some of the buildings and I, I do feel like we have a history here in Rome and we want to protect the history. And part of the history, of course, are our buildings.
There is discussion about creating an arts district in Rome. Do you think this would be a good time for the city to support an arts headquarters in Rome? Perhaps to house the Rome Area Councilor of Arts, especially with many other towns have similar buildings, for example, Cartisville and Calhoun.
Yes. I have been on, I've been on RACCA's board. I'm still on Rome City, I mean, Rome Symphony Orchestra's board, RIF, the Rome International Film Festival. So I'm really into arts. And without tooting my horn here, this past year, RACCA did give me the Arts Award. And so I'm, I'm definitely committed to this. Now, I also serve on the Downtown Development Authority and we had a plan that was presented to us by University of Georgia. And in that plan, there is a dedicated arts district down Fifth Avenue. And we're looking, we're looking at that and we're really focusing our attention on that. So yes, absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us Commissioner.
Thank you.
And thank you for being with us. We'll be right back right after this.
Your family, friends, and neighbors are all counting on you. Never let your gun get into the wrong hands. Remember, always lock it up.
Welcome back to Community Watch. We've been talking to candidates for Rome City Commission, Wards One and Three. We learned a lot. We hope you did too. Remember, the election is November 3rd. You can vote for up to three in each ward or two or just one. Thank you for being with us. Remember to vote. We'll see you next time on Community Watch.